Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Counselor Kohler?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Freeman?
She is excused.
Counselor Parsons?
Uh, here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
And Counselor Smith?
Here.
And Youth Counselor Anne Ferris is also excused this evening. Something about finals.
Finals, yeah.
Yeah. Would you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, that's right. It's my honor.
Whoa. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, under special orders of business, we have a career technical education center, otherwise known as CTEC student, here tonight, Ian Koenig, and one of his instructors. Do you want to come on down? Counselor Herrera and I both serve on the CTEC Advisory Committee, and it's been really helpful, or counsel, and Counselor Herrera has been very intentional. Please have a seat. Thank you. To make sure that we get to meet students from CTEC and hear about the great programs that are there. The reason this center is so important is available to students throughout the Salem-Kaiser School District and offers some incredible training in job skills and professional skills and has an amazing graduation rate. Our youth counselor, Anne Ferris, is also a CTEC student. Ian, welcome. I'm glad to have you here tonight, and if you'd like to introduce yourself and then introduce Ian, please.
Yeah, my name's Jake Finneran. I am a business teacher as well as a public safety teacher out at CTEC. I'm here today to tell you a little bit about our program as well as introduce you to Ian, who's a great student who the Kaiser community should be really proud of. In our business program, we strive to build professional skills so that no matter what Ian does or any of the students do when they leave CTEC, they have that competitive advantage that they might not get at their homeschool. So, we do things like have weekly personal branding sessions where they learn skills, how to build themselves up professionally, resume building, interviewing, things of that nature. And then we also give them the opportunity to do real-world business, which they might not be able to do at their homeschool. All the homeschools have business courses, but only at CTEC can they really do real-world business where they go out in the community and they make real money and get that experience to get that competitive advantage. So, I can't think of a better student who embodies everything we teach at CTEC from a professional standpoint. Ian shows professionalism well beyond his years. He's already sort of taken the lead on our sales team and become a great salesman, so he's someone the Kaiser community should be really proud of. So with that, I'll pass it over to him, and he can tell you guys a little bit about what he has been doing at CTEC.
Yeah, so again, my name is Ian Koenig.
Can you do me a favor and pull that microphone? I think it's a better one. There we go.
So again, my name is Ian Koenig, a student in the Business Development and Leadership Program at CTEC, also a senior at McNary High School. I joined the business program just because I already had some previous knowledge in business and really just wanted to go farther into that. I knew it was something that I really wanted to study in college, but, yeah, it just really interested me. So when I joined the program, right off the bat, we started making like a marketing package for the cosmetology salon and for the grand opening, getting people into the door. I liked that a lot, and I think marketing is something that I really want to pursue in the future. Another thing that we've been doing is selling the sheds that the construction program has been building. It's a lot of fun being to call around the school district, athletic directors and principals, and just trying to make some sales. I think it's really something that I'll be able to use in the future. So I think I will be attending Shemeka Community College this fall and studying business. But one thing I like about this program is that wherever I choose to go out there throughout my life, I know that I'll be able to use the skills I learned at CTEC in order to go anywhere I want to.
Wonderful. So you have some family here with you today.
Would you like to introduce them?
Yeah, I do. I have my mom. She's in the black North Face jacket. Her name is Melissa Koenig. Alongside her is my father, John Koenig, and my sister, Kelsey Koenig.
Well, glad you're here. Thank you so much. Student success is also very much tied to family support, and we know that your parents and your family makes a big difference for you, don't they?
Yeah.
So you're going to go to Shemeka, and then after you complete your work at Shemeka, do you have a place in mind or you're going to kind of see what opportunities open up?
I'm for sure going to see what opportunities open up to me, but I think my all-around goal would be to open a marketing firm along with like a media video production type of thing, so I can make my own content while also distributing it to companies around the area.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Counselor Herrera?
Well, thanks for being here, Ian, and thanks to folks for being here. I know we've known each other forever, and I forget your name, but anyway, hey, um, this is, I do that, the young man told me earlier, I just figured out why you call everybody "big guy." You don't remember the names, of course, yeah. Right, "big guy"? Anyway, so Ian, when being around the students over at CTEC, because we do tours over there quite often, I get a kick out of the excitement that you guys bring, and I can just see it in you, and we're so proud of you for doing what you're doing and pursuing your dream. Great. So, thanks folks for being here.
Yeah, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Anyone else? So, one more thing. Leadership comes with a responsibility. People have invested in you.
Yeah.
So what are you doing to help the next students get ready to want to choose CTEC and the program that you're in?
So we've had some people come into the program just as tours in order to get people to just really support our, back our program. We've also had some students come in from schools all around the Salem-Kaiser School District, getting them involved in business activities, things like, you guys ever seen Shark Tank?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe I've probably, we've done like, kind of things like that where you give them a bunch of items and they have to make their own product and have a sales pitch for that. Also, matching different pricing strategies and other selling skills like that. So just, kids come in, we show them around the program, what it's really like, and hopefully they choose it, and we may rub off on them the right way, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and we wish you great success in your CTEC career and going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
CTEC also offers tours for people who are interested in not only families but also businesses that would like to partner. And I know a lot of people, once they see this video of Mr. Koenig, will be getting a hold of him because they're going to be recruiting him and his classmates for jobs. Okay, so that will take us then to committee reports, and I do have one committee report, and that is Matt Lawyer will talk to us about parks and planning and Clive Creek Watershed
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel staff, good evening. For the record, Matt Lawyer, Parks Board, Planning Commission, Sheriff, Watershed Council. Just wanted to take a quick second. How cool is that, to hear from a high school kid that can come up here and talk so eloquently and be able to address the council? And I think it's just a great thing to see what CTEC's doing, and it's pretty exciting, so. Well, he's gone, so. But congratulations to Ian and his family. That's pretty cool. So, first order of business, talk a little bit about the Planning Commission. We met on January 9th. This is kind of a beginning of the year, take a look back at what we did, look at what we're going to do. We actually accomplished a lot of the goals in 2018, crossed off better than three-quarters of the different workflow items we wanted to go through, so tremendous amount of work done by Nate and Shane to kind of shepherd us through that and make sure we had all the right material to get that done, including sign code and development standard or design standards. Those are two really big sort of bites to take, and we did pretty well through that. One of the things that we talked about very early on, Chair Whalen wanted to talk about sort of the vision we have as a planning commission looking to the future as these studies begin to sort of wind down and we start to look at what the future of Kaiser is going to look like. No determination or sort of visioning was fleshed out at that time, but it was brought forward to have us on the commission sort of begin to look at what our expectations are so we can kind of begin to take that information from those studies and apply them for our city. So looking forward to seeing both what the visioning is going to look like and also the outcome of the studies is going to be. We had our first meeting with our youth liaison, Christopher Wolfert, a great kid. Met him several months ago, and I know one counselor here knows him quite well, and so he's very smart, very, you want to talk about an articulate kid that can keep you on your toes, have a 20-minute conversation with him. Really looking forward to working with him. I think he's a junior, so I can only imagine how awesome he's going to be by next year, I think that's about it. Anything I missed on that, Nate? Okay. So that's planning. As far as parks, I'm going to introduce our new Parks Board member, my good friend Ben Hittle. Ben and I have known each other since middle school, and Ben went off to serve in the Army while I was off playing on ships and playing with aircraft in the Navy. And so he came on board, had his first meeting with us on January 8th. So, he didn't, he couldn't find any other sucker to come watch do this, so he's watching me, so that way when it's his time to come, he's at least a little bit practiced up and have a good benchmark to improve on. Pretty calm meeting for the most part. We re-elected Dave Loudon as the chair, and for lack of a better vice chair, they elected We worked through the three- to five-year dedicated park fee, which I'll sort of not talk about and let Bill talk about that here in just a little bit. It's really cool to argue about things we're going to do versus those things we cannot do, so that was, that's nice. In terms of the facility we looked at from the National Fitness Centers, or excuse, National Fitness Campaign, that was at $120,000, got to get $90,000 local money. I don't know that we're necessarily going to pursue that outside of any individual that chooses to take that up. I think $90,000 right now is a pretty large task, but if somebody comes with a really good donor, then by all means, I think we can work sort of the logistic piece into that, but right now, that's kind of on hold. However, Jeff Davis, a citizen within the city, is continuing to work on his project, working with Rotary and some other folks to put in multiple stationary exercise pieces throughout the system, so we're excited to see what comes along with that. Went through our normal parks reports, nothing of any major concern. We did have some testimony from some folks in the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association specifically related to Willamette Manor. I know that Robert addressed those quite clearly, and it's more about the path and sort of the fill that needs to go back in along the path, but Robert's looked at that, and we've had a conversation about that and what we're going to do to get that fixed. Outside of that, I think it was pretty much a routine meeting. We're going to be looking at some stuff here in the next coming months of really good projects people bringing forward, and hopefully in the next couple of years, we'll be talking about even more fun, exciting capital projects, so.
But press pause. Are there any questions on planning or parks? So I've got Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Lawyer, in one of the pieces that I saw, that there was a five-year plan for what you wanted with the parks, I noticed that there was nothing in there for the Kaiser Rapids Park about what we're going to do with the big field where the orchard was.
Madam Mayor, Counsel Kohler, thanks. So that's actually a great question that I'm going to punt to staff because that is more of a capital project. I mean, the field, as I understand it, is a five-year lease, so I don't anticipate in that three to five years, we're probably going to do anything unless somebody with Miss Havisham in their life is going to come along and want to put lots and lots and lots of money into something, but I will defer to Mr. Lawyer if he's got anything to add on that.
Certainly. You're referring to the open field down near the river or the field that used to be the orchard, or both? Both?
Yes.
Okay. The open field down near the river that's between the pathway, the one the asphalt path wraps around, we don't have a specific plan to irrigate and seed that, but it's on our radar, and we're probably looking toward the end of our five-year plan. As far as the other piece that used to be the orchard, we have an agreement with a farmer to maintain that and farm that for us, and I think, I can't remember if it's a five-year agreement or a three-year agreement with extensions. And so as long as that agreement is in place, we will let them take care of that ground for us, and then we will, the benefit we receive from that is as they work the ground, it'll be less intensive for us to seed it and irrigate it when they're done. And so once that's finished or they're done, whichever comes first, we'll put together a plan to do that. And that area actually is slated for softball fields and soccer fields, and so there's more to obviously developing those than just irrigating and planting grass, but that's the first start.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
So the last thing.
Hang on, I did have one more question on the parks and Crimennetly. I started thinking about something else. I'll come back to it.
So, as it relates to the parks, we're still continuing on with the Kaiser Little League Long Range, I don't know, there's 14 other words in that group.
Long Range Planning Task Force.
Yeah, that one. So we're having the subcommittee meeting on the 24th, and we're going to be sitting down with the presidents of both organizations to kind of start to work out the management plan and kind of look at that. So there will be sort of a two-tiered approach to that. We'll be on the 24th, again, the first part of February, and then hopefully come with a, at least, really good draft of an idea for the end of February. And as I understand it, we've canceled the first, the meeting February 5th in order to kind of accomplish that and maintain the momentum that we're going to get, so. I'm really excited that both organizations are so interested in doing this. It's a nice departure from the last few years, and so they've been incredible to work with, both Brad Ornsmeyer and Ryan Walsh, and so really looking forward to that, so. And that's it for parks. Real quick on Watershed Council.
Can we have a, we got a question on the task force, please. Counselor Parsons?
How many people are on the subcommittee?
So because it's a, so four. Because anymore we risk, we run the risk of having a quorum, and then it's the whole, you know, public law and all that.
Okay.
Stuff that makes Shannon nervous.
Who's on the, who's on the subcommittee, remind me, please?
As I recall, Madam Mayor, it's myself, Counselor Parsons, Brad Ornsmeyer, and Ryan Walsh, which they both just recently confirmed, so that's what we have for now.
Time's a meeting, 6:00.
Sure.
Here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got to get, got to keep those calendars up. All right.
I think, yeah, I think it's 5:30 or 6:00, and I think Counselor Parsons was nice enough to bring pizzas, which I think is fantastic.
Clive Creek Watershed Council.
Right. So we're meeting February 6th, will be the first meeting of 2019. Really excited about a prospective project that I'm not quite going to put out yet, but I'm going to be working hopefully very closely with Public Works and the park staff and possibly even Chief Teague to work out a pretty awesome project, so. We'll be in Ben Miller, I think, the 9th? Got to double-check my calendar, but we'll be doing a cleanup very early in February, so. We do have a few open positions for the Watershed Council. We're excited to have Counselor Kohler on board as our council liaison. He's got big shoes to fill coming in for Counsel Anderson. I'm sure he's going to do just fine, and that is all I have for now, Madam Mayor.
All right. So if people want to get involved with the Clive Creek Watershed Council, do you have a Facebook page and do you have a website as well?
We have a Facebook page and a website that was updated sometime between, yes. It's a little, we're working on getting that updated, so I think it's, it's claggettcwc or claggettcwc.com or .org.
So claggettcwc.org.
Right.
So people can get a hold of the Watershed Council and bring groups in to help volunteer with these projects.
That's correct. They can contact us on Facebook or find us any other way, so.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Okay, let me get back to my agenda here. Okay, so, public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight, the McNary Restaurant Liquor License Change of Ownership and Resolution Forming the Snook Grove Street Lighting Local Improvement District. So is there any, I don't have anybody who has signed up for public testimony. Is there anybody who would like to address the council this evening? Okay, let's go on then to our first public hearing, which is Item 7A, the McNary Restaurant Liquor License Change of Ownership Trade Name. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, hang on. Open public hearing. Go.
10, 2018, the city received an application for a change of ownership and trade name for the liquor license at what was McNary Restaurant located at 165 McNary Estates Drive North in Kaiser. The application is for full on-premises and off-premises license. The trade name will change from McNary Restaurant to Jeff and Cheryl's. As required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, notice was published and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the establishment. Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicants and had no additional information to provide or to recommend denial of the application. In addition, Kaiser Community Development Department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned and had no additional comment. It is recommended the public hearing be opened, as it has been, to allow testimony from the applicants or other interested individuals, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. It is further recommended the city council recommend approval of the application for Jeff and Cheryl's Restaurant under the guidelines established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser. Now, the recommendation will then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right, I don't have anybody signed up, but the owners are here. I would like to invite you to come down and tell us a little bit about what you're doing and give us a chance to, if we haven't had a chance to meet you, to do so. So that microphone in the middle there is the one that picks up the best for television? So if you could share that one, that would be awesome.
The other one works. The other one works, you just have to eat it.
So this one works better? Okay. So if you would just give your name and city of residence for the record, and then tell us about Jeff and Cheryl's On the Turn.
At the Turn.
At the Turn.
I'm Jeff, and she's Cheryl.
And our, the DBA is Jeff and Cheryl's, but our tagline is "On the Turn at McNary." We needed a way to incorporate our location because it was McNary Restaurant and Lounge, which then automatically connected it to the golf club as well. We chose to rebrand and make it our own so that we weren't under the guise of any pre-existing from, because it had changed hands so many times until David had it, and he had it seven and a half years. So this was our shot to make it something that we wanted to do.
So you took over December?
Yeah, December 13th. We had to wait for the temporary liquor and, oh, liquor and lottery license.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, jump right in, right at the holiday season.
Yeah.
No one asked me if it was smart.
I wasn't going to say that, but you were very busy.
We were very busy, yes.
So good. So can you tell us a little bit about some of the changes coming, and what do you see being some of the strong things that are going to be out at Jeff and Cheryl's?
We're currently working on the menu. We're shrinking it down considerably. It's, if you count all the menus, there's nine pages.
Oh.
And we're trying to get it down to 111 by 14, front and back, with a happy hour menu.
Hey.
You know, I do the majority of the shopping, so I can tell you how lengthy and tedious it is to go shopping for all 135 items that are sitting on the current menu on nine pages. So, that's our first order of business. We are currently recruiting for new staff, and once that's done, we're bringing in OLCC for their Responsible Vendor Program, but I don't want to do it twice. I want to wait, we're currently going to lose one, if not two, more staff, which is going to leave us like the bare minimum. So we're going to add more staff and then do it all at once, have it, you know, be closed, and then have the program director, whoever does it from OLCC, come in and do the training. We're hoping to close Mondays for a few weeks, probably through February and maybe into the beginning of March, to paint, because we can't paint, we can't prep, we can't sand when people are in the office or in the building. So we're hoping we can start this coming Monday, but of course, we found a reservation on the books, so we're now, we're trying to reach out to that person to confirm that they're going to be there. Otherwise, it's going to set it back a week, so.
Very exciting times.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful place, beautiful venue, a lot of history out there. We get, people come in every day telling us, you know, they've been a part of McNary when it was, there was no homes out there, they golfed out there, they worked out there. It's a real treasure out there.
And we're excited.
Fantastic. Counselor Herrera and then Counselor Parsons.
Welcome, guys. For those of you who don't know, Cheryl and Chef have been involved in our community for many years. They're community people all the way here, they coach. I mean, I would find them at the Little League fields, at McNary Games, Porter's, oh, wait. They were always involved, and I'm really happy that they are taking over this establishment. I think there's good things ahead, and everybody knows them, so I already know what it's going to be. Boy, you couldn't get in there last Thursday and chip and tick, chip, what day was that, Bill?
Fish and chips.
Fish and chips?
Thursday.
Thursday, I know you were there because I couldn't, anyway, so it's going to be exciting, and I'm really grateful for all you guys have done for our community. Jeff, you were on sidelines with me for many, many years in football, for those of you that don't know. And Cheryl, tell us how Austin's doing now that you're there. He's our Kaiser's professional baseball player, his son.
That's right.
You guys, good luck, okay?
Thank you.
How is Austin doing?
Fine. He just signed with Taiwan, so he spent the last two years with the Rangers, and he's going to Taiwan, and we're going to be grandparents.
Oh. Congratulations.
We're pretty excited, not like you can tell.
Sorry to get, sorry.
It's out there now.
Sorry to get up a subject that may or may not, but we have to know, you got to know.
It's all family. Counselor Parsons and then Counselor.
So I just want to ask you a question. So you talked about the Responsible Vendor Program and bringing in someone to teach that to the new staff, but the current staff, have they been through that at all?
All staff. That's why we're waiting.
Okay.
We're waiting for, because I don't want to do it twice.
No, I understand, but they didn't previously go through it years ago?
I do not know that.
Okay.
I do not know that.
Okay.
When I signed the papers for the temporary liquor license, she asked me if we were going to, and I said yes, so I, I don't know, I guess I just assumed it hadn't been done before.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's an important aspect we like to know about with our businesses, for sure.
Correct.
Thank you. And congratulations.
Happy for you. Anybody else? Well, we're looking forward to good things out at Jeff and Cheryl's, and thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this, for this public All right, saying none, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for Jeff and Cheryl's Restaurant under the guidelines established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinance of the City of Kaiser, and then we'll forward that recommendation to the OLCC for final approval.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for McNary Restaurant under the guidelines, actually Jeff and Cheryl's, under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and forward this recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval. Discussion. Do I have the right name? It has to be under, the motion and second has to be for the restaurant name, which is Jeff and Cheryl's.
Jeff and Cheryl's, correct.
Because it said McNary in there.
I believe so.
That's going to, that's the name of the liquor license, is it not, Cheryl?
It's, yes, Jeff and Cheryl's.
Jeff and Cheryl's, okay.
Thank you.
Jeff and Cheryl's.
So I want to make sure that was in the record correctly. All right, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Thank you very much and that will take us then to item 7B, which is, whoops. A resolution forming the Snook Grove Street Lighting Local Improvement District and then an ordinance spreading the assessments to Snook Grove Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Open public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On October 15th, 2018, City Council adopted Resolution R 2018-2913 initiating Snook Grove Street Lighting District and directing City Engineer to make a survey and file a report. On November 19th, 2018, the City Council approved City Engineer's report and set a public hearing to consider remonstrances to the project and objections to the proposed assessments. Notice of the public hearing stating the intention to form the district and to assess for the lighting improvements was published in the Kaiser Times and mailed to the property owners as required under Kaiser, City of Kaiser Ordinance 94-278. It is recommended City Council open the public hearing to first consider oral objections and written remonstrances to the formation of Snook Grove Street Lighting Local Improvement District. If valid remonstrances of the owners of two-thirds of the land to be specially assessed for the lighting district are presented to the council at the public hearing, it is recommended then that you close the public hearing and suspend the formation of the district for six months. If remonstrances are not received, it is recommended then that you close the public hearing and consider adoption of the resolution forming the lighting district and then, if so done, consider adoption of the proposed assessment ordinance. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Is there anybody who would like to address the council on this issue? I have nobody signed up for this public hearing. So I will take it, there are no remonstrances, none have been submitted in writing? Okay. Close the public hearing. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2018-2932 adopting use policies and rates for the Kaiser Community Center.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Wrong page.
I hit the link. Sorry about that. Try that one more time.
Rewind.
Okay, rewind.
Right.
It's right here, sorry.
Okay, got it?
Yes, I'm sorry. Rewind. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2019 forming the Snook Grove Street Lighting Local Improvement District.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2019 forming Snook Grove Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance spreading assessments to Snook Grove Street Lighting Local Improvement District.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance, 2019, an ordinance spreading assessments to Snook Grove Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. That will take us then into administrative action. Item 8A is a waiver of community center fee for the Jerry Mee Memorial Service. Counselor, City Manager.
Counselor, City Manager.
Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. As you know, former Counselor Jerry McGee passed away recently and the family is planning a memorial service at the community center here. Families requested the City Council waive the fees connected with that event. For those of you that don't know, Jerry McGee, who I've known for many, many years, was the longest, well, the second longest continuous service of 12 years, second only to Mayor Lori Christopher. The resolution we have for community rooms allows the council to reduce our waiver rates and deposits and you can see the dollar amounts set forth in the staff report there. With regard to the options listed, as I indicated to the council in an email earlier, I worked with Tracy on the staff report and both of us missed the fact that late last year, the council changed the resolution and one of the changes they made was to remove the possibility of waiving the insurance issue. In fact, I went back and looked specifically, that sentence that had been in there was deleted and was discussed at that meeting. So I apologize for that error, both Tracy and I forgot that and we used a template from previously. So as I indicated in the email, options one and five, which talk about waiving the general liability policy, are not really options for council because under the ordinance, you cannot waive the insurance requirements. And before I forget, I checked with Gary Whalen, who's assisting with this. The staff report indicates that it's from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM on February 2nd. The program, it'll be open at 1:00, but the program is starting at 2:00. Is that correct for the audience and for you folks? With regard back to the options, the options are to deny the request or to grant part of the request, the rental fee, security deposit, or to grant and the staffing costs, but, or to grant the waiver of the costs except for staffing. So the three options are options two, three and four. As I had indicated in my email, the council recently, for Wally Mall, former city manager waived all fees. So just by comparison purposes. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counselor Kohler.
So what would the totals be under each of those options?
Well, the net cost, so we won't, wouldn't include the deposit, but the net cost is $680, which is be basically the rental cost plus the event staff. As Tracy pointed out, we may end up with volunteers, so we may end up not paying the $80 charge. So it'd be 600 or 800, 600 or $680. So there's not a lot of difference between options three and four, essentially. In other words, just the $80, which we might not end up paying anyway, so.
Follow up.
So thank you, Madam Mayor. So Mr. Johnson, what would the totals be under two, three and four?
Okay, so under two, there, it's denied, so they would pay the entire cost, which would be a total of 600 or $680, depending on if we pay it, plus the deposit, which would be returned. So if you look at the first page, you can see right towards the bottom, total rental fee is 1,830, of which 1,150 is refundable, that gets the 680 net cost. So obviously, if you chose option number two, then all the costs would have to be paid. Option number three, the net cost would be $680 if we have to pay for event hosts. And under option four, it's, option four and three are virtually the same, essentially. It's the $80, which we might not have to pay if we had volunteers, so either 600 or $680, depending, net cost again. So we didn't really separate out an option for the deposit as I saw that. We typically, if we have a waiver, don't charge the deposit, but that's entirely up to you folks.
So.
Did I have that correct, Tracy? Okay.
So two comments. One, there's a caveat in here on volunteers. These are people who are already trained on the systems, on the walls and the facility. This is not something that is generally available where you've got some people who are just willing to come in and volunteer to run systems here. This is volunteers who already, we know and have been trained here to be able to offer their services without charge. So I want that out there so we don't set up an expectation that, well, gee, if I just get a few people, we've got this. And in addition, there is no alcohol, so that changes the dynamic here also. Because if there were OLCC requirements, staffing would not be, waiving staffing would not be an option.
Correct.
So I want to get those two things out there, just for clarity, so we don't set up false expectations. I have one more. Apparently I'm dropping thoughts tonight, but I want to make sure that we're really clear on that for, so folks would know. And then the security deposit, we will have insurance, so if there is a need for repairs and so forth, not having the security deposit will not mean that those costs are not covered if necessary. We're just not collecting it up front, is that correct?
No. Actually, the insurance is for liability issues, so not usually for damage. I'm not sure the insurance covers the damage. Typically, it's a liability policy, not for the damages, but we often take a credit card, so we usually, we can do it that way too. But we typically don't have any issues with these types of events, especially an afternoon event with no alcohol involved, so.
But it's for, you know, these insurances, you know, just being prudent on the part of the host as well as the part of the city. But in terms of if there were something to happen, then costs would be covered, you know, through, we're not collecting the deposit upfront, but under the agreement that we have, that would be covered by the host. If it is something that was caused, I'm getting a head nod in the audience, so I think we have some agreement there. I know you're checking the agreement there, right, Shannon?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, which?
I'm sorry, that was a, that was a question that if there were damage, even though we're not collecting a security deposit.
Right.
Damages specific, you know, those particular charges would be taken care of afterwards.
Yes, and I can't tell from this whether or not that's accurate or not. Typically, though, the person who's running it still has to sign the agreement and is responsible for those damages. So we have some remedies there. Whether the insurance covers it or not is, is an issue, because the insurance really is for liability issues, not for damage to the property typically.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Counselor Parsons, do you want to put a motion on the table for us to discuss?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt, well, I'm sorry, approve option number three, waive the room rental fee, the security cleaning deposit and the staffing costs for the memorial for Dr. Jerry McGee on February 2nd.
What require? Second.
I don't have to say anything about the insurance.
The insurance is a given?
Part of the option.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council used, approve option three to waive the room rental fee, security cleaning deposit and staffing costs for the Dr. Jerry McGee memorial on February 2nd. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. When we conclude our business here during our council reports, I would invite all of us to speak regarding Dr. Jerry McGee and then, of course, as many of us as can be there on the 2nd, we will be happy to join with our community in celebrating the life and accomplishments of Dr. McGee. So thank you. Gary Whalen is here in the audience tonight, former city counselor, and he is helping the family to organize this, this event to celebrate one of our great leaders, for whom the statue out front of Thomas of Kaiser Byers is striking resemblance to Dr. McGee. Just saying. Thank you very much. Okay, that will take us then to item 8B, which is ordinance amending the Kaiser Development Code. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I am going to.
My spot?
Yeah.
Okay.
City Attorney Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. At the December 17, 2018 council meeting, council directed us to prepare an ordinance approving Kaiser Development Code changes with regard to accessory dwelling units. Such ordinance is attached for your review and adoption. I might point out for Councilors Kohler and Smith, this is a legislative change as opposed to quasi-judicial, which I'll explain in our training. You may, if you wish, vote for this or you can abstain, either your choice, because you weren't on the council at the time. It's totally up to you. And then I, we'll talk about the same thing when we get to the minutes, so. But with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 1.200 definitions, Section 2.403 shares housing facilities and Section 3.101 summary of application types, amending ordinance 98-389.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance, 2019, amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 1.200 definitions, Section 2.403 shares housing facilities and Section 3.101 summary of application types, amending ordinance 98-389. Discussion, and I've got a question. Is it supposed to be shares or shared in the title? So can we, so that would be a scrivener's error?
Yes, it's a scrivener's error.
Oh, it wasn't me.
No, it wasn't you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that should be shared.
Okay.
In the title, rather than shares.
I would like to, now do I have to do that just as an amendment or the scrivener's?
That's just a scrivener's.
Okay.
We'll correct that.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Item 8C, which is the Parks Priority Three to Five Year Plan. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Chris. Madam Mayor, Council. The implementation of the Parks Services Fee provides a stable and adequate funding source, which enables staff to prioritize and plan for needed maintenance and replacement projects throughout the park system. Staff consider input received from the public during the outreach done, primarily by the Parks Advisory Board, as part of the process to implement the Parks Services Fee to develop a priority plan for projects and activities. Staff presented their draft proposal to the Parks Advisory Board at the December 11th, 2018 meeting and revised the plan based on input received from board members and the public. The final draft was then presented at the January 8th, 2019 meeting, where the Parks Advisory Board unanimously recommended the plan be presented to council. There's not a direct fiscal impact with approving this plan, as it is primarily a timeline of projects and activities to be accomplished in the park system. All projects included in the plan will be presented to the council for consideration and approval prior to work being started on them. And in addition, an outline of the activities for a given fiscal cycle will be presented during the budget process. Staff recommends the city council consider the proposed plan, direct staff to amend the plan if necessary and by consensus, support moving forward with accomplishing the projects and activities included in the plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counselor Reed.
This is a kind of a vague question, but you know, as I'm looking at this, I'm just wondering, have there been any projects that we've talked about that have been pushed beyond the five years? Any of them, because I know as we discussed, the, you know, the Parks Fee and so forth, there were several projects and again, I realize this is a vague question, but is there anything important that we're putting off?
No. No, the answer is no to that question. We talked about, Robert and I talked about developing a plan and we felt a three to five year plan was something that we could be fairly accurate with. Once you get beyond five years, there's a lot of variables involved and we didn't feel comfortable trying to expand past five years. And one of the things that's noted on here primarily is we're working to have an ADA compliance plan done for the city, the entire city, that includes the parks. We don't know what that's going to tell us we need to do, so that's kind of a wild card with all this. And so that's why we stuck to the three to five year plan, but there's nothing that was identified as a priority that's been pushed back or extended past this five year plan. And in fact, most of all, that happens in the first three years.
Thank you.
And before I go to Counselor Parsons, a great push on this was the ongoing maintenance. So what we don't see here is the frequency of mowing, watering, maintenance, trees and so forth. That also has been funded through the Parks Fee to be able to have more regular services. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Certainly. Listening to the feedback from the, or the input from the public through the outreach process done by the Parks Board, the highest priority things were increased maintenance and that was mowing, fertilization, weeds, amenities, big toy or play structures, pathways needed to be maintained and fixed and upgraded and taken care of. So what we did right away is we hired two people, two full-time staff, bought vehicles and equipment so that staff could get out there and do the work. And that really showed this summer, this year, then, and they started in February, so they have barely been with us a year. But it really showed this summer how much improvement we could make and a better level of service that was shown throughout the park system. The new mowers that we purchased enabled the staff to mow parks at a pace that we haven't been able to do before, primarily because, one, they're bigger modex, so that helps, but also having the staff here full-time and trained in our ways and getting them up to speed. And plus, the weather really helped last year too, I can't ignore that. They were getting through mowing in two days when it used to take all week. And that was the whole system. And so that really showed a big benefit right off the bat. In addition to that, Robert and I worked hard, put together plans in the first year, replaced the play structure at Meadows, including the port and play surfacing, sports court at Claggett replaced, Northview Sports Court replaced and bigger, and repaired and added the pathways in Wallace House, Willamette Manor, Meadows, Country Glen, Claggett and Northview Parks. So I'm very proud of what we accomplished. So I'm very proud of what we accomplished in a year. I felt a lot of pressure to accomplish a lot in a year, and we did. And I want to keep that moving for the next three to five years, at least.
Thank you very much. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam, I have two questions. One, Bill, I guess my first question is, are we still hiring, like, temps or anything? Or does staff is still able to do all that?
No, we're still hiring temps in the summer. And in fact, Robert had planned to hire three last summer, and he only hired two. We were able to accomplish, and again, the weather really helped us in the mowing, so that freed the full-time staff up to do other things. But there's still three temps in the budget.
Awesome. And I have a follow-up?
Yes.
So I want to say, I want to say, and Mr. Lawyer, while he's in the room, too, is I'm very pleased with this plan because there's, there was two really big things on there that I really wanted to see done. One was the skate park, and one was some adequate shelter at the big toys. So I'm glad to see that they're both in the three-year plan versus being out even further. So I want to thank you for taking that into consideration. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions on this plan? Counselor Kohler?
Just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So by consensus, is there, are there any additions or changes that anybody would like to recommend to this three to five year plan? So by consensus, shall we affirm this plan and direct staff to continue going forward and do good for our parks? By consensus, go forth and do good for our parks.
We shall, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Very exciting, very exciting stuff. All right, that takes us then to our consent calendar, I believe? Do I have that correct? All right, consent calendar. Counselor Parsons, do you want to read the consent calendar for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. There are eight items on the consent calendar this evening. Item A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign First Amendment to intergovernmental agreement relating to creation of a program coordinator for the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative. Item B is a resolution for the appointment of mayor to serve on the Kaiser Heritage Board of Directors. C is a resolution amending the membership of Kaiser Little League Park Long Range Planning Task Force, amending R 2018-2897. D is a resolution changing the name of Rickman Community Garden to the Peggy and Jerry Moore Community Garden. E is a resolution naming the tree-
Arboretum.
Thank you, arboretum located at Kaiser Rapids Park, the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum in honor of Wilbur Bloom. F is approval of the December 10, 2018 work session minutes. G is approval of the December 17, 2018 regular session minutes. And H is the approval of the January 7, 2019 regular session minutes.
Are there any polls? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Traditionally, new councillors, by the way, we changed the rules on voting on minutes a few years ago, so if you're a councillor and you weren't at the meeting, you can still vote on the minutes. It used to be you wouldn't vote on those. However, typically, new councillors for the two December meetings, councillors Kohler and councillor Smith should abstain as you weren't councillors at that time. So-
We poll those, though?
Poll those, too.
Yeah, okay.
What I would suggest. F and G.
Okay.
Yes. However.
Yep. So then I move approval of the consent calendar, items A through E, and then item H. You have to second.
I second that.
All right, items A through E and H have been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of items F and G.
I second.
Items F and G have been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So abstentions would be?
Aye.
And? Okay. Motion passes with four ayes, two abstentions, and one absence. All right, thank you very much. That will take us then to, back to my agenda here at the top, our council liaison reports. And Counselor Reed, shall we start with you tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I got to substitute for the Planning Commission as council liaison for, for Council Freeman, and there are fascinating things going on, the, the Planning Commission, and all kinds of important things to discuss. And Matt Lawyer gave a wonderful presentation of that earlier, so I'm not going to rehash that, but I appreciated that opportunity. I went to go see McNary's Grease, and it was a fantastic production. I was really proud of our kids, and it was, it was just a lot of fun. Also attended the Buildable Lands Inventory and Housing Needs Analysis, the more affectionately known as BLIHNA. And took a lot of notes on that. And I'm, I'm looking forward to, to learning more about that world and seeing the various options that we have. And it's an exciting time for, for us to kind of take control of, of our future and what that will look like, and getting all those variables understood in order to make those decisions. And I am grateful to be a part of that. And so I have a meeting scheduled to ask all my questions, of which I have many. But yeah, that, it's, it was, it was very interesting. I went to the LGBTQ forum downtown, and that was a very interesting forum. It was a great conversation, it was a panel, and my, my takeaway from that is that we have a, a lot to learn about each other in general, and that we, we have ways to go in being able to build a respectful community for all of our citizens. And so it was a really good conversation, and I, I really appreciated being a part of that as well. We have the community dinner coming up tomorrow at, I believe, 5:00. And so those are always the last Wednesday of the month, and that's at St. Edward's, as always, and I'm looking forward to that. We have a revitalization grant meeting on Monday, and Kaiser Festival Advisory Board's meeting also on Monday. And so that is also something to look forward to. And as far as Jerry McGee, you asked us all to say a little something about Jerry McGee, and I really appreciated the Kaiser Times article about him. It really captured the spirit of who he was. I, I first became acquainted with his grandson, Wes Jordan, many, many years ago at McNary, and have just been really impressed with, he embodies the Kaiser motto of, of pride, spirit, and volunteerism. He was everywhere, and he was, spent his whole life in, in service of the community in so many important and interesting ways. And so really appreciate all of his efforts and all of those of his family to support him. We are a better community because of him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Tuesday, January 8, I attended the groundbreaking for the cogeneration plan at Willa Lake Treatment Plant. I figured I have nowhere to go but up from there. So it was very interesting. Thursday, January 10, along with Mayor Clark, I attended the Latino Business Alliance, where we listened to Captain Ortega present an informational program about some federal programs authorizing, available through the National Guard, assisting undocumented families to the, with a path to citizenship. I want to encourage any green card holders to examine the benefits through the National Guard. The next Thursday, that same Thursday, I attended the Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee. Mike de Blasio was elected the chair of that committee, and Pat Fisher, the vice chair. They discussed additional stop signs at the corner of Mandarin and Adam, which I'm sure that will continue. Matt Lawyer discussed a partnership between bike peds and parks. And then the 2019 goals were discussed. The Kiwanis Stormbeaker Children's Cancer Program sponsoring a ride on, on Sunday, June 16. For more information, please contact Wayne Frye on the Bike Ped Committee. Wednesday, the 17, I attended the Chamber Government Affairs Committee for Counselor Parsons. This past Saturday, I attended the Chamber First Citizens Banquet along with councillors Herrera and Smith and Mayor Clark. Great fun evening, had lots of fun, and got to eat some food. And so it explains why Kaiser is such a great place to raise our families. And of course, Kaiser Community Dinner tomorrow night, got to go to that. And then Mr. McGee, a lot of respect and love for him. There's few people that I've ever met that really understand how life works. Even when he finds that he was on the wrong side of an issue, he would accept that and move on and not have, have any resentment for the people that were on the other side of the issue. And just a truly a great statesman. He introduced me to Rotary Club when I was running for city council and was just a great supporter and a great teacher. I hope I can be somewhat like him someday.
Thank you very much. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I had Marion County Commissioner Breakfast, our first of the year, where we met the newest county commissioner, Colm Willis. Very young, but is very energetic and ready to go. He knows he has, he knows he can never fill the big shoes of Janet Carlson, but he's going to, to do his best. And, and of course, Commissioners Bretano and Cameron are making sure that the committees that he gets will be a great learning experience for him. That's, that was supposed to be funny because they gave him all the- Anyway, so, but he's, he was, he's very excited, and I, I'm looking forward to working with him in the future. I, I do want to put a plug in for McNary mentors. Mrs. Ferris asked me to, to put another plug in. We are still needing a few more mentors to help the, the latest swing through the scholarships that are due mainly in March and April. So we really do need some mentors to come in and work with these kids and, and get motivated to apply for these scholarships because there's many, many, many out there, and, and people don't even know. So we, we just, a big push to, to please bring in just maybe a couple more mentors to the program. So see, see Rochelle Ferris at the Career and Counseling Center at McNary High School. She'll hook you up. I went to the Community Business and Education Leaders Meeting last week. We're still brainstorming. We, we, we keep getting new people in and new people out, but the, the goal is still the same, and that is to, to keep kids in school, to get the graduation rate up high. And McNary, I'm sorry, not McNary, McKay in North Salem have these innovative programs that are actually working. I think North's grad, graduation rate went up 10% from one, from, I think, 2016 to 2017, or something like that, or 2017, 20. Anyway, guys, it's working. And so the other high schools are, you know, implementing certain, certain things, but it, like I said, it depends on, you know, where you're at and the, and the type of, of kids that you have, but, but these programs are working. And so keeping kids in school and getting this graduation rate up is one of our high priorities. So we're working real hard with that. I attended the Volunteer Coordinating Committee meeting. We did select several people for several committees, but we still are currently recruiting for someone on the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, which is like a historical committee, but they do really good things. So anyone interested in that, go to the City of Kaiser website to volunteer opportunities and apply for that position. And then on, coming up, I have the KLL Task Force Subcommittee on, on Thursday, the 24th. On the 28th, we have a revitalization, revitalization committee meeting. February 2nd is Jerry McGee's memorial. And then I, and then on February 4th will be city council. And Counselor President Freeman should be here then. So that's what she stated. Coming, that was coming up. Okay, so now Jerry McGee. So six years ago, when I decided to run for city council, I knew Jerry way back on the Parks Board, so I've, I'd known him for 20 years. And, but when I wanted to run for city council, he was one of the first person that I went to, and I said, Jerry, what do I, what do I need, what do I need to do? And what do I need to say to, to convince people to vote for me? And Jerry, one of Jerry's things was, you know, you got to be conservative. Like, tonight, if he would have been here, he wouldn't have wanted us to waive those fees. I'm just going to tell you that right now. But, but because he was Jerry McGee, I did it, right? So, but he, you know, he, he, he wanted responsible spending. I mean, he wanted the city to make sure that, you know, we had that balanced budget, and we weren't going to spend any money. And, and, and not only that, he, he just wanted things to be, to be done right because he really, he really loved the city. He was one of our founding fathers, and I, I want to thank him for being a mentor and a teacher for me for the last six years. So Jerry McGee, this is for you, and we'll see you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ferrera?
Counselor Parsons said everything I was going to say. And you know, and it's funny because I think everybody went to talk to Jerry McGee when they ran for-
I think it was, had to.
Well, it's kind of, it's, it's a combination of respect and, and his great knowledge of Kaiser. And I kidded with my, my son that I wanted to talk to about my considering running for him. And, and I told him that Jerry McGee said, why? Not just, not really. He actually said, encouraged me. But that's a huge loss. Sorry to start with that because I just stayed in my mind. I was also at the Commissioner, Commissioners Breakfast and welcome Mr. Willis Thursday. And I also, I got to attend the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association. And I just kind of dropped in on, on the folks and see how they were doing. And they run a pretty good meeting. I also attended Greater Gupser's meeting, and the good news is we're going to continue to, to keep that club going. I'm going to try to be a little more active. I see some of our folks here in the audience, but I, I encourage our Greater Gupser Neighborhood Association to continue that. I, I went to the Rotary meeting this week and enjoyed that. Had to put my, every time I show, show up, they always charge me for something, but we promoted the Hall of Fame banquet, which is coming up on March 15. And we encourage all of you to come and check out our, our inductees, including Sean Kitner and the 2009 baseball team. So First Citizen Awards was nice, and I want to congratulate Vicky Jackson on being a long overdue, I mean, and she's an amazing person, and her resume goes back way, and I've always thought, you know, it should be a long body of work, and she definitely fits that. And I'm so happy that she, also, our Merchant of the Year was Kyle Duran, who doesn't say much, and when he shows here, I can barely hear him. But he's one heck of a volunteer in this community. And Kyle doesn't say much, but he, he does a lot, so. Also, I want to congratulate Service Education, Brian Aker. There's another guy that's under the radar, does so much for our youth in our community. And Larry, I didn't, I never knew Larry's last name until this last banquet. And there's a guy that does everything, but you never see him. He's a guy that helps put, he's a, Wallery's right-hand man, everybody's right-hand man. And nobody sees him because he's always does it undercover and underdark, the way he likes, so. Larry Schmidt, I don't even know how to pronounce his name.
McDowell.
Schmidt. He's been doing this for many, many years, so. Also attended the Volunteer Coordinating Committee where we, I got to observe the, my select, Robin Wilson, who is on now on the committee. And she's, she's a branch manager for, lives in Kaiser, but she's a branch manager for, I believe it's Washington Federal. Okay, what's the other one? Oh, we got the, the CAT Club, excuse me, the Cal Club leadership. And I'm really impressed with our Kennedy leadership. We have over 30 mentors and 37 kids. And that's, every time I go, it's, it's exciting. We had a great participation. Our gym, PE teacher does a great job of putting activities together for, for kids to, to work on team building exercises. But we do a lot of really cool stuff. We're going to be doing some volunteering in the community in terms of picking up garbage in community parks. Also, like I said, I want to thank the, you guys for helping for the special deal for Jerry. And like I say, you know, it's funny because every time, there you go. Every time I, I think of him, I think of some wise comment he always makes every time I talk to him. So he will be greatly missed, and I'm sure I forgot a bunch of stuff, but that's all good. Thank you.
That sounded pretty thorough to me. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I jumped right in. I actually started off about 36 after, hours after I was sworn in, showing up at the Mid Valley Association of Realtors presentation. They had invited Kaiser. Didn't really know we were going to be doing that, but I was able to attend and speak on behalf of the City of Kaiser in front of all the Realtors, which was really fun because they were jazzed about it. They were excited about it and hadn't had that opportunity before. And I was followed by the mayor of Salem and his bridge problems and things like that. So I looked great, and it was fun.
Represent.
I was representing, representing Kaiser. Then I was able to attend the Commissioners Breakfast with Mayor Parsons, or sorry, Mayor Parsons, Counselor Parsons. I keep trying to convince her someday.
And the rumor starts here. Stop here.
And Councilor Herrera. That was fun, getting to know the new Commissioner... Well, they're all new to me, but meeting them and understanding kind of what they do, that was an opportunity that I was really excited to have. Councilor Herrera and I also went to the Agribusiness Event hosted by the Salem Association of Realtors, and really impressed. I had not been to that before, and it was just all really based around farming. And amazing what we have in the Willamette Valley, and how blessed we are when you really look at the work and the people and the families that have been influential within this community. It's just... It was amazing. We really enjoyed that. Had the meeting for the Kaiser Public Arts Commission, where they put... They elected Beth Melendi... Melendi, is that how you said it? As the Chair, and Kim Steen as the co-chair. And they brought up the Kaiser Cultural History Poll Project, and it looks like we are out for bids again of getting an artist, because they were not able to get one. So, that's kind of a priority that they're working on. And I was able to go to the First Citizens Banquet, which was awesome, and always a lovely event, and very nice to see the people that put so much into the City of Kaiser. You just... You don't realize it until you actually start to hear some of the things. And the humility of everybody who won was pretty apparent, that they weren't really all about the spotlight, they were just about doing the work, and I appreciated that. Jerry McGee, I am probably the only person here that really didn't know him very well. I only met him briefly. So, I'm looking to all of you to show me who he was in your leadership and in your service. And if I can be even a portion of the servant that he was to our community, I will feel as though I succeeded.
Thank you very much. Well said. I don't have much to add. Again, I was with Councilor Kohler at the Biogas Cogen Groundbreaking at the Willow Lake Treatment Plant. What that is, is going to upgrade the systems there to a facility that will create up to 1,200 kilowatt renewable power, which can power 900 homes. It keeps 5,000 tons of pollution-causing gases from being released into the atmosphere each year. And Jerry would love this, it saves over $300,000 per year. That's what we're talking about. It's a partnership with the City of Salem, PGE, Corolo, the Department of Energy, Slayden, and Energy Trust of Oregon. And we look forward to that project now under construction and then coming online very soon. Great, great project. The Kaiser Heritage Foundation Board with Councilor Reed, that continues. We have now been a year with Kaiser Homegrown Theater being in there and being the Kaiser Cultural Center. So, I encourage everyone, go to the website, go to the Facebook page, or even better, just go over there and see what's going on. There is so much energy in that building now with the library, art, the museum, and theater, all open, vibrant, and doing some great work. The Kaiser Homegrown Theater has their 2019 schedule out, and they're really excited about the folks they've now cast for this year's slate of shows. So, watch for that. On the 9th, I attended the SEDCOR, which is Strategic Economic Development Corporation, went to their luncheon, talking about the upcoming issues of Legislature, which is now in session, so everybody hang on, long session. This is a marathon, not a sprint. We'll be talking... He was talking about PERS, property tax, the long-term viability of our system for public funding, and a number of other issues that the Legislature is going to need to address this session. Councilor Kohler covered the Latino Business Alliance. We now have it scheduled, so that each month, two councilors will plan to attend. Like I told Jose Gonzalez, we want to make sure this was scheduled, because things don't happen by accident. We're busy people, and we purpose to make sure people are there to build relationship. And it was a great, great morning with the National Guard, but also several state agencies were there, again, to build business relationships. West County Neighborhood, I was there for Councilor Freeman, and Chief Teague did a great presentation on all the work that's being done with our Police Department. Every time you talk, sir, I learn about some of the great innovative stuff that is going on within our Police Department. You know, showcases, not front page above the fold, but it really, really makes a difference in our community for promoting safety, building relationships and trust, and really helping out our communities. So, I want to commend you for that, and thank you for sharing with the West Kaiser Neighborhood The Community Listening Forum, that was... Councilor Reed talked about, that was a great evening. It was a partnership of the Statesman Journal and Bridgeway, talking about mental health, sexual health, community connections, and the needs specifically for our LGBTQ neighbors, and how we can help promote a community sense of health and involvement and connection. They're going to do continued work, and they also did more in-depth training the next day for staff. This is a community that has a higher rate of homelessness, suicide, and mental health issues. So, the more involved and the more well-informed that the care providers can be, the better off people are going to be with much better outcomes. So, I really appreciate the Statesman Journal helping take the lead on bringing the speakers and that panel together. Councilor Reed mentioned Grease, and Grease is the word. If you didn't see it, you missed it. I gotta tell you, they did a fabulous job. Great job, McNary High School, all the students, great energy. And if you think it was just a rehash of the movie, wrong. Very creative. Everybody's talked about the First Citizen, and I would also like to join everybody in congratulating the winners. And I also want to point out that the Kaiser 2019 Business Directory and Visitor's Guide was also distributed that evening. And this is how prepared our Chamber of Commerce is. The winners were already inside. They had it all ready to go, and they managed to keep this thing under wraps until after the winners were announced. Way to go. Then, today, I had a meeting with SCATS, the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, and I was elected to chair that for a seventh year. So, I guess be there or be chair. I've really enjoyed chairing that. We're doing some good work, and again, this is a community-wide collaboration, Marion Polk, Marion County, Polk County, Salem-Kaiser, Turner, the School District, and the Salem-Kaiser Transit District. We talked about our regional transportation plan and the selection of projects over the next 20 years, looking how we can make those dollars really work for us in all modes. Coming up tomorrow, we have the League of Organ Cities Elected Essentials. I will be there for Welcome and Presenting as part of the Council Training, and I believe Councilor Smith will be attending. And Ms. Davis is also gonna be attending.
I'll be there in the evening.
Okay, and you're gonna be there evening. Great. On the 31st, I'll be speaking at the Rotary Luncheon, kind of talking about the new year, but the state of the city won't be until March 12th, when I'll be speaking at the Chamber of Commerce. And then, on the 4th, Councilor Herrera and I will have the CTEC Advisory Committee Luncheon. And that is all I have. So, then, I will turn then to our City Manager for Other Business, this time is provided... Oh, Jerry McGee. I'm gonna take that moment to also share one of my thoughts. Jerry McGee was an amazing mentor and an example, and I got to know him years ago when he chaired the Backyard Burning Task Force. So, when I moved to Kaiser, people were still torching piles of yard debris in the backyard with other amenities thrown in that made them particularly noxious. When I saw in the paper that there was gonna be a task force dealing with banning backyard burning, I showed up. I have asthma, so I wanted to see this accomplished. Jerry McGee was the one who was chairing that. What impressed me deeply was that he took such a holistic approach to solving the problem. He just didn't look at, let's ban it and be done with it. Said, "Okay, the whole purpose of backyard burning is to dispose of yard debris. How do we partner with our garbage haulers to take care of that in an environmentally responsible, cost-effective way?" And that's when we were able to work with the haulers to institute our green can system. I was impressed with how he brought everybody together, respectfully listened to a variety of points of view, crafted a solution that came from everybody's understanding and expertise, and got it done and into action. I do a lot of the work I do in that same manner, because I saw how effective it is. And I really appreciated his leadership, his mentorship, his encouragement, and he showed up. You know, Kaiser shows up. Well, that's because Jerry and Shirley showed up, his wife Shirley. She actually attended more Council meetings than he did. If he wasn't gonna be here, Council meetings weren't televised. So, she was here to make sure, she heard what was going on, and they could talk about it later. So, Jerry and Shirley, thank you for leading this city and being such a great example, and appreciate you both so much. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy. Tim.
Madam Mayor, City Council, just wanted to let you know that the city was informed by the Government Finance Officer Association that our 2018-19 budget received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This is the fifth year that we've received this award, and it doesn't go out to just everyone. This is something that we have to earn. Every year, we have to earn it. This is one of the ways that we ensure accountability as a city, as well as transparency. There's about a 200-page list of requirements that we have to meet, and our budget is judged against that criteria. So, this is a big accomplishment for the entire city. Thank you.
Congratulations. Well done.
Just a little bit about Tim that I don't even know that you want everybody knowing this, but prior to coming to work for us, he worked for J.I. Joe's, and as they were going down. And so, he brought that experience to us, and he is so... Well, the bad experience that he had watching that happen, and he is so cautious and so conscientious about how we set up our finances, and it's just something I truly appreciate about him. And he's done a fantastic job. He's just really done a fantastic job for us.
Thank you. I am very nervous all the time. That's my job.
Chief Teague.
Coffee with a cop tomorrow morning at Starbucks on River Road from 9:00 to 11:00.
Mr. Lawyer.
Just a quick update on the bathroom project. Met with the contractor this morning. They're planning on pouring the sidewalk around the building this Thursday, whether it's supposed to be good for that. So, they're getting close to being ready to open. He didn't give me an opening date, finish date yet, but it's getting closer every day. So, that's it.
Mr. Brown.
So, a couple of you have mentioned the stakeholder meetings that we're doing for our Kaiser Revitalization Project. And we're doing that... So, this would be the second round of these stakeholder meetings, and we focus on business owners along our corridors, River Road and Cherry. And we've also outreach to our Latino community, and Pastor Dominguez is helping us with that as well. And so, yes, that's on Monday and Tuesday of next week. That project is coming together with some good formulated ideas, and we are working on getting that package together so that we can take it out to a community outreach event. So, more on that to follow. As you also know, we are working on our Billable Lands Inventory Housing Needs Analysis, affectionately known as the BLI H&amp;A project.
Affectionately.
And so, that... You may have noticed that we are rescheduling that meeting that was going to be on February 21st.
20th.
20th, right. We're rescheduling it to the following day, on the 21st. That'd be from Wednesday to Thursday of that. So, again, so we have these teams of consultants that are busy putting together a lot of stuff that we are going to then be leveraging and taking to you, and it's gonna be the keystone of some of the decisions you're going to make about our future.
Mr. Johnson.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Written Communications, I don't have anything at this time. Agenda input, our next Council meeting will be February 4th, 7:00 p.m. We'll be meeting in regular session. On February 11th, we will have our work session with the City Council orientation that had to be rescheduled. Then, our next Council meeting after that will be February 19th, which is a Tuesday because of the President's Day holiday on February 18th. We'll meet at 7:00 o'clock in regular session, and then we will have our work session for goal-setting on February 25th, starting at 5:45. So, February is gonna be short but full. Yep, hang on. You thought Legislature was gonna be busy. We're gonna be rocking it. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Where's my phone? Seeing none, it is 8:26, and we are adjourned.